This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buwemi. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comments to tonight's agenda? Item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of the October 3, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
I'll second Sally's approval of those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, no slides for tonight, but a couple of things. And one of the things that I'd like to bring up is to ask Sally and Bill for their input on something. Before I get there, though, today I spent a lot of time with the executives of Medtronic. We're looking forward to continue to move forward with a five-year plan of reinvestment back into North Haven, including an addition of a large campus. So in today's meeting, I had the DECD there, Advanced CT Connecticut, and I brought in a developer to introduce to Medtronic as we're looking to take some of these parcels that are rundown, the Rite Aid, the old gas station, which I have a plan for, various parcels around there. What we're trying to accomplish is that as this campus gets built out over five years, they will be adding perhaps 300 new jobs here in North Haven. And a lot of what they're trying to accomplish is have people move into North Haven, new people. So we're a little concerned at some of these dilapidated buildings down there. They need a lot of pushing, which is where I come in, pushing the owners and the developers to try to remediate, not remediate, renovate those sites. So we're in the process of that. I have other developers I'm going to bring in to Medtronic's. They're looking for stores, restaurants, amenities, coffee shops to create walkability for their employees. So this is a major strategic plan that I've been working on with them. It's taking a lot of time, but because they have decided to make North Haven a worldwide corporation in North Haven, their corporation be a worldwide corporation in North Haven, I think it's a very important initiative. I had an economic development breakfast meeting last week. We summarized a lot of the projects going on. We demonstrated successes, opportunities, and challenges. And as I said there that day, I'm on a mission to create positive outcomes. And that's that update. Now, where I'd like to ask your opinion on something. December 5, our next Board of Selectment meeting, I can't make it. And I can't make it because December is a very, very busy month for me. I am all over, I'm invited all over to all these major events. We have a worldwide company in North Haven that's invited me to the founder's birthday party. So I'm representing North Haven a lot, particularly during the month of December. So do you think that A, you both should have the meeting without me? Or B, we could move it to the day before, Wednesday? What's your opinion, Sally? Start with you.
That's usually a full agenda with a lot of appointments, but because it's an even year, you know...
There will be appointments, but not as many.
Okay, because some years, there's quite a long list.
Right, but you're right, there will be appointments.
Okay, but do you anticipate any other? I know it's a month away.
Yeah.
Either one is fine with me. That is Wednesday, the 4th?
That would be the second option. I'd be able to handle that.
I could do either. Because it's going to be a shorter appointment agenda, I think we could do it on the 5th. I could do it on the 4th, so I'll defer to my colleague.
But we'd have to have a substitute person because I would have trouble making it on the 5th as well.
Oh, yeah, if we do it on Wednesday, we have to get Tammy to do it.
No, if we do it on Thursday...
Thursday, yeah.
So maybe the better thing would be to do it on the Wednesday.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I could do it.
All right, Wednesday.
You know, based on my being retired, and I have nothing on my calendar for either day right now for that need.
So we'd have to notice it as a special meeting.
It'll be a special meeting. We'll cancel the meeting of the 5th, and we'll notice the meeting of the 4th as a special meeting.
So shall I make a motion to amend the agenda to 4A and then make those motions to cancel and then to call a special meeting on the 4th?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, which we can do because this is a regular meeting. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add 4A regarding rescheduling of the December Board of Selectmen meeting.
I'll second that motion by Sally.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Thank you for your insight or your perspective and insight on this. So all those in favor, aye.
Aye. And now pursuant to 4A, I'll make a motion, I'll do it in one motion, to cancel the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for December 5 and instead move for a special Board of Selectmen meeting December 4, Wednesday, at 6:30, Conference Room 1 of the Town Hall. I'll make that motion with those two parts.
And I'll second both parts of that motion.
Okay, so we have a second and a motion and a second. Any other discussions? In discussion, because Mary and Tom just walked in, what we're talking about, Mary and Tom, the reason is that I was just explaining that throughout the month of December is a very busy month for me. Everything I do in this position is designed to represent North Haven on the external side. In December, I get flooded with requests for events, and I go to all the events because I represent North Haven. So that's why we're changing this meeting. So thank you very much.
Okay, did you call for the vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So please, since we appreciate you, both of you, and Nancy also coming all the time to our meetings, please fix your calendars, too.
Thank you.
Ed Hills? We're good, okay.
Well, fine.
Sorry, we have no correspondents tonight. We're doing...
We did.
Sally hasn't...
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a letter that I received from a devoted writer of letters to me, Mr. Lillo. He sent me a letter, so I always feel an obligation to share. When they are written to me in my capacity as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I feel an obligation to share it with you, the both of you. And he's concerned about how NHTV has had problems showing Board of Selectmen meetings live, which he looks forward to. So I talked with NHTV personnel prior to this meeting, and it looks like the main cause of the problem has been solved, which is giving them access to fire department because their computer equipment affects here.
Well, we now also have, we went even further. We now have the schedule of when the generator testing is done.
Right.
So we know when the generator will be rebooting. And then the other thing is we'll probably put a battery backup on it, so that'll take care of it, too. So we have a plan in place.
So what happened, Mr. Lillo, and we're very sorry because he does, he and many others, look forward to these riveting meetings. And so, yeah, when they reboot over there, it affects, it was affecting our ability to broadcast live here. But now we've addressed it. And another problem was there, I think it was three months ago, at 7 o'clock, they were showing a recording of a prior Board of Selectmen meeting. Or it started at 6:00, so when you went on at 6:30, it was the middle of a prior meeting. So they have fixed that with safety measures to prevent the broadcasting of old Board of Selectmen meetings in order to accommodate the live ones. So your message was heard, and it had already been addressed, Mr. Lillo. And thank you, as always, for writing.
So there's a parallel story to all that.
Okay.
So he wrote me a letter also.
Oh, okay.
But the reason I didn't bring it up here because I already solved the problem. I talked to him directly, and we got Val involved, and we solved this problem. So Neil, if you're watching, it was a great conversation we had because, you know, you and I know him very well.
Yes.
So we reacted right away to Mr. Lillo's letter. And then he apologized to me because he thought that the two letters were too strong. But I said, "There's no need to apologize, Neil. You did us a service. You helped us," and that's the way we look at it. So thank you. I know you're watching tonight, Neil. Say hello to Angie. And I know Denise's birthday was the other day. We wish her a happy birthday. So thank you for your efforts. You've helped us here.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're going to start. I'm going to turn this over to Bill and Sally. This long, long...
Yeah, Bill, why don't you do 6, and I'll challenge 7.
Okay, and if you get tired along the way, I'll be glad to read a paragraph or two. Next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution of the Ward of Selectmen respect to the authorization, issuance, and sale of not exceeding $25 million Town of North Haven general obligation refunding bonds.
Did you want to set this up or just have me read? We've done this before.
Right, yeah.
Why don't you set it up?
I'll tee it up. So what this is, then we'll have Sally and Bill read the rest of the resolution. So we had projected that interest rates are going to be falling. We have what's called callable bonds. This resolution, if it passes tonight, and I don't see why it wouldn't, but if it passes tonight, allows us to manage the markets, to scrutinize and determine what our current interest rates are on these $25 million worth of bonds. And if the Fed cuts rates, which they announced this morning, again, we're going to watch the rates closely. When those rates fall below what our rates are now, we can then execute with speed this initiative rather than wait a month or six weeks for the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
I may be miss an opportunity.
Miss an opportunity, right.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this. It's an effort to save money. I think previous times I've tried to liken it a little bit to folks refinancing their mortgage in an effort to save money over the remaining term. Or so I have always supported it. So let me start with number seven. It's a resolution with respect to the authorization, issuance, and sale of not exceeding $25 million Town of North Haven general obligation refunding bonds. Resolved, A, that the town issue its refunding bonds, the refunding bonds, in an amount not to exceed $25 million, the proceeds of which are hereby appropriated to fund one or more escrows to be applied together with the investment earnings thereon to the payment in whole or in part as determined by the first selectman and the treasurer of the town of the outstanding principal of and interest on and any call premium on all or a portion of any issue of the town's general obligation bonds, including but not limited to the town's $10 million general obligations bond issue of 2016, $7,500,000 general obligation bonds issue of 2017, $7,500,000 general obligation bonds issue of 2018, and $15 million general obligation bonds issue of 2019 Series B, the refunded bonds, including the payment of interest accrued on the refunded bonds to the date of payment and to pay costs of issuance of the refunding bonds, including legal fees, consultants' fees, trustee or escrow agent's fees, underwriting fees, net interest, and other financing costs and other costs related to the payment of the refunding bonds. The refunding bond shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-370(c) of the General Statutes of Connecticut revised of 1958 as amended and any other enabling acts. The refunding bond shall be general obligations of the town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The first selectman and the treasurer of the town shall sign the refunding bonds by their manual or facsimile signatures. The law firm of Pullman &amp; Colme LLC is designated as bond counsel to approve the legality of the refunding bonds. The first selectman and the treasurer are authorized to determine the amount, date, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the refunding bonds to designate one or more banks or trust companies to the certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for the refunding bonds, to provide for the keeping of a record of the refunding bonds, to sell the refunding bonds at public or private sale, to deliver the refunding bonds, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the refunding bonds. B, that the town hereby declares its official intent under Federal Income Tax Regulation Section 1.150-2 that costs of the refunding may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that, except to the extent reimbursed from grant monies, the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above the refunding. The first selectman and the treasurer are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable and to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds authorized by this resolution, if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. C, that while it is anticipated that the bonds will qualify as tax-exempt bonds, the first selectman and the treasurer are authorized upon the advice of bond counsel to issue all or any portion of the bonds as bonds, the interest on which is includeable in the gross income of the owners thereof for federal income tax purposes. And it is hereby found and determined that the issuance of any such bonds or notes is in the public interest. D, that the first selectman and the treasurer are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds. E, that the first selectman and the treasurer are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to enable the town to effectuate the refunding of the refunded bonds and to issue the refunding bonds for such purposes, including but not limited to the entrance into agreements on behalf of the town with underwriters, trustees, escrow agents, and others to facilitate the issuance of refunding bonds, the escrow of the proceeds thereof and investment earnings thereon, and the payment of the refunded bonds. F, that the above authorization to issue refunding bonds shall lapse on June 30, 2026. Sorry, I just couldn't stop.
A fine performance. A fine, very good performance.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, those paragraphs as read by Sally. The, it was pointed out by Mike, June 30, 2020, and read by Sally, June 30, 2026, is how long the authorization goes. So I would definitely second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Sally and Bill, feel free to handle it from here.
And then the, yeah, and I think the other thing that may be to note, too, is it gives you flexibility because there's clearly a definite belief from the financial markets that the Federal Reserve will continue to lower rates in 2025. So that should give us, you know, even though it may be something you don't do right away, but wait until later in the year. Hopefully, you know, rates will continue to come down, and that'll definitely benefit our refunding. Item number eight is appointment of Mary Alana Imparati, 112 Arrowdale Road, to the Community Services Commission to fill the unexpired term of Robin Wilson set to expire on December 31, 2025.
I'll second that appointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. In discussion, Robin moved away from North Haven. She's out, I believe, in Vermont right now. She was also on the police commission. So this is to replace her on this commission. So any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve the property tax refunds reflected in item nine there of our agenda.
I'll second Sally's motion regarding those property tax refunds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Wow, okay, we're at the end. Next regular meeting of this Board of Selectmen is Thursday, and now it'll be Wednesday, December 5. Wednesday, December 5.
December 4.
4th, I'm sorry. So just to recap, we moved it from Thursday, the 5th, to Wednesday, the 4th. And it will be noticed as a special meeting at 6:30 here at Town Hall. Public comment?
So I just have one small topic. It's about the early voting. So we voted the early voting method. And we parked across the street in a spot at the Green. And we went around, I would say, between 6:20 and 6:30 p.m. on October 29. We did think it went great. So I wanted to ask if there could be some kind of a light put on that A-frame caution stand that was in the crosswalk because cars didn't really see us when they were just moving along. I'm not saying they were speeding, but I'm just saying they were moving along. And so we had to wait, you know, in the crosswalk, but to the side, wait for them to pass. So it wasn't, you know, all the way dark, but it was beyond dusk. And so, and after when we came out, we were talking a little bit by the car. I noticed a police car had come and parked in front of the Town Hall near the walkway with its lights on. So that definitely slowed cars down. So people were able to, you know, cross without hesitation. So I was just wondering in that in-between time, you know what I mean? Because I know they make them, you know, where they have the stand, and then there's some kind of a light, you know what I mean? So just for people like us who happen to have got there in that in-between time.
Yeah, we'll take a look. That's a police decision. We'll talk to the chief. And if we have to invest in maybe lit versions of those signs, I don't see why we couldn't do it, but I gotta run it by PD, okay?
Yeah, that would be great.
Voting will probably won't be in Town Hall again.
Yeah, that's another thing.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, pal. Because, you know, I think that we didn't realize the volume. We had over 5,000 people coming. The Town Hall was flooded, mobbed, people coming and paying their sewer bills. So we're doing that here now for safer security. So I think we're going to be looking at, Mary, a different location for the next early voting. It became just too congested. And at the same time, people were trying to get into the town clerk's office. They had assessor's business, trying to pay sewer fees, dealing with the lines were backed out sometimes right out the door.
Yes, yes, yes. And the room, the conference room was, you know, there was many people in there. And some people were lined up in the hall, and they could only allow a certain, a small number of people to get in there and get in line to check in. So it was really, really, you know, tight. So yeah, if you could find a better place, more illuminated and larger, that would be terrific.
So we're looking at potentially the rec center because we are changing the lighting in there to make it a brighter type of location. So we're going to be cognizant of tabulators, have to be there also. So we are looking at that. And, you know, in the end, it costs us a lot of money for early voting, but in the end, it's the will of the people. People loved it.
I loved it.
I stopped downstairs, you know, two or three times just because I had other business downstairs, and people were thanking the town for the way it was handled. So the will of the people said we want it.
Yeah, it went smoothly. Except for, like I said, just those little things, but it was great.
Yeah, I think the move to the rec center is especially prudent in presidential years because we had over 80% turnout. You know, this is still relatively new. I mean, we had early voting in the Republican primary in August, and it was, you know, very, very light. So I don't, you know, we will have to really look at statistics and see what elections...
Need to go over there.
Need to go over there.
In that case, there's only the two, you know, one elected office and two candidates, so that's why it was so light. But even, I mean, even next year, for, you know, when we have on and off year for municipal elections, I would hope that this, the volume, the number of people who voted this time would continue in the future for any of the votes or referendums that we have for the town. I mean, it's very encouraging to see so many people come out.
We always hope for that, but statistically, the statistics tell us that municipals are going to be in the high 30s, where not too many years ago, they were in the 50s.
We get back to the 50s.
Gubernatorial's are high 50s, 60s. So, you know...
You have to give you even added perspective. In the first two days of early voting, we had more people early vote than they vote in the town referendum.
Right, so obviously, we need, we need early voting for presidential. That's made clear because we have... And so the rec center, I think, would be an appropriate alternative. I think we could still stick with the one location just because of the expense of it. But with a bigger location and better parking, more parking behind the pool, as well as on Linsley, you know, because that, where you parked along the Green, you know, you're either blocking traffic backing in or you're blocking traffic backing out.
Right.
Whereas if you're in a parking lot behind the pool, going onto Elm Street, just less traffic. So we'll see.
But that's a good point. We're going to determine the events that need to have that alternate location. And definitely a presidential.
Definitely. Thank you.
And just along the same lines, I think, Sally, for, you know, maybe to mention for people out there, and I voted early, which I thought was, you know, I think it's a good opportunity for people to come when they can come to vote. But the process is very controlled in the sense that I received, and I believe every person received, an envelope with their name on it that they signed, and the ballot was sealed in that envelope and not opened until, you know, the day of the, you know, the day of the lecture to be actually tabulated by the, or, you know, registrars or voters who are from both parties. So everything was very, I thought everything was very secure. And I did not realize that, I knew it would go in an envelope, but I didn't know, and it would be sealed, but my name and address and signature were on that envelope. So, you know, I think the controls were very much in place to make sure that, you know, the ballots were secured every day separately by day and in a signed envelope with my name on it for the day that I voted. So, you know, a lot of people may not know that, you know. I didn't know that it would actually be in a signed envelope that had my name and address and signature on it.
They were, they were tabulated here in this room. There were two tabulators churning away, counting them. You know, whereas the absentee ballots, I think, have to be hand counted. They cannot, I don't think they are fed into any tabulator. But the early voting ballots were...
Were through.
Yeah.
But, you know, so really, to our registrar, both our registrars and voters, and town clerk, and everybody here that, you know, that contributed, and everybody in the town clerk's office contributed to the, you know, and also, you know, the fact that, you know, that it did require a lot of traffic here in Town Hall that impacted, you know, people in departments that weren't even involved in early voting. So I think it was very, I think, as has been said already, it was a very successful early voting and election as well.
I'm sure it was a long 14 days for some of the staff people and other departments, and tax collector or assessor. But, yeah.
The registrars did a great job.
Yeah.
Both Jim and Jan, and Stacy and her team did a great job also.
And a lot of great volunteers.
And volunteers.
Volunteers.
Yeah.
And the assessor's office, dealing with multiple transactions at the same time. Sewer collections, like I said, regular assessor business and dealing with the congestion. So kudos to all the departments.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 you're totally fine. Nancy Barrett, One Crestview Drive. So just piggybacking on all of this, again, I would like to commend all of the people, both... voting as an indicator of the, of the overall election, and it was an impressive group of very dedicated citizens who were making their contributions to this democratic process. So I was very impressed by it, and also, you know, by the two registrars, who I know worked very hard at this, as well as, you know, the entire team here. But I'd also like to commend all of the candidates who ran for office this year. I know from my own experience running for Board of Finance, it's, it's a lot of work, and for those who ran for state positions and went door-knocking, as well as attended events every single night for months, it really is an enormous undertaking, not just for the individual candidates, but for their entire families. So I'd just like to commend everyone that, that made that dedicated, dedication of their time and energy for the betterment of, of the people that they were hoping to serve. And, you know, and I agree, I think that the turnout of 15,000 voters in our small little hamlet of only 24,000 people, it was, was really impressive. I would love to see that carry forward, but one of the other things that I also noticed on Election Day was we had a record number of same-day registrants, and that's a combination of people who have just moved to our town, as well as people whose registration had become inactive, and then they needed to activate it, and so maybe they hadn't been involved in voting for a few years, and so I think that's, that's a wonderful sign of people that are very interested in engaging and having their voices heard through their votes. So I took that as a great sign, and I'm hoping, as Bill said, that that, that same kind of turnout that continues for, for our referendums and municipal elections. So my only question, Mr. Frieda, is regarding the bond refinancing. Are we now in the position of still having the AAA bond rating and using that interest rate, or have we moved on to this, this new, what was it, a AA plus or something?
Double A plus.
Yeah. So it's double A plus.
Double A plus.
That's what we're trying to beat as a result of the Fed changes.
Right.
Okay, I wasn't sure when exactly that
Anything that's non-callable is still back to the AAA status, so anything that's already been bonded for. So that doesn't get adjusted. Anything moving forward gets adjusted, which this would be moving forward.
This would be moving forward.
Right.
Right. So, so the original rating for all of those bonds was at the AAA rating, but moving forward for refinancing, we would have to beat the, the double A plus.
Right.
And also all of the fees, of course, associated with, with the refinancing, which anyone who has been through refinancing of your, of your mortgage, you know that that can be pretty significant as well, so.
So we're going to analyze the delta between AAA and double A plus, and the delta between what the rates will fall to, and then make the conclusion about whether or not we're going to go back through the process and call these bonds, but this resolution allows us to execute quickly, so.
Gives you the flexibility to do that. Great. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Okay, so a couple of announcements, Bill? You wanted to make one, or Sally?
And Sally and I also was thinking of mentioning it. On Sunday, the November 10th, it's, we, it's the day before Veterans Day, and as we've quite often done in the past, the American Legion and, I think, will also be involved in the Veterans Day ceremony on the Green at 12:00 noon. So, you know, if, if you're available, please come to honor our veterans. There'll be a field of flags, I think, for people who have actually bought flags for the Green, to maybe commemorate members of their families who've been veterans, and it would be great if, you know, anybody who's listening tonight could also go.
Right. And we have, the Rotary has their pancake breakfast
Yeah.
In the morning at the middle school.
Middle school.
Right, from 8:00 AM, which is always fun and very well-attended. So if you're a veteran, you get free pancakes.
Free pancakes.
Great, and sausage.
And sausage, that's right, yeah, so.
What a deal.
And if you're not a veteran, it's a good breakfast.
That's right, oh, yeah. I'm sure we'll all be there.
And then come to the
But I hope, I hope more people, you know, I hear, you talk to people, and everybody says, "Oh, yeah, we support the veterans." Well, show up then. That's all I could say. Show up at the Green, and, because there's veterans there and a lot of empty chairs, and it would really be nice to see those chairs filled on Veterans Day, where we honor all the millions of veterans, men and women who have served.
Yes.
So let's, let's show up.
Should be a nice day, too, weather-wise.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.